Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Rockingham Select Board Meeting.
It's 6:04, ladies and gentlemen. I called the meeting to order. We're in the Lower Theater in town hall. There is a Zoom connection listed on the website. And there are also a meeting ID and a phone number to call if you want to connect. We are unfortunately do not have, we have Zoom, but we have no pictures. So we'll limp along with the voice only. So please identify yourselves if you wish to speak. So first order of business today is the Board of Liquor Commissioners. We have six, seven of them here, so I'll read them. Shell Station is looking for tobacco license and a second class license. Leslie's Tavern is looking for class of restaurant, first class restaurant license, second class restaurant license, outside consumption permit. Elk Club is looking for a third class club license and a first class class club license and outside consumption permit. American Legion Post 37 is looking for a third class club license, a third class club license. 7-Eleven is looking for a second class license and a tobacco license. And Leesize Market is looking for a second class license. I take a motion to approve or deny all of the above or none of the above.
I approve that we approve all seven of these licenses applications.
There is a second.
Nice second.
Motion's main second to approve all the aforementioned liquor licenses and tobacco licenses. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. It'll call the regular Select Board meeting to order. First order of business is to approve the minutes of April 4th. It is in your packet. Take a motion to approve.
I approve that we approve the minutes of April 4th.
Our second.
Motion's main second to approve the minutes of April 4th, 2023. Any further discussion, corrections, deletions, additions, et cetera? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item is going to be the additional additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. I have none.
No, nothing for tonight.
Board? Seeing none? Move down to the public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person.
Nobody's online, it's got their hand up, so.
So, pardon, nobody?
Nobody online has their hand up at the moment.
Okay, there will be no public comments now. Nobody wants to make any. The manager report.
Thanks, just a couple of things just for the board. You know, we're still working on some items from the LAMP. You know, we started that conversation and the fire chief and I met with Jamie Barrett today, went over some of his concerns. If you remember, he had appeared at a previous meeting and had some concerns about some items on the LAMP as well as the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we went over some of the items from both of those. Talked about some things that might be beneficial for updating. Since we last spoke, I did speak to the Bartonsville Grange about adding them as a warming shelter, a place for us to utilize. So we've been in touch with them. They were receptive to that. That was Sue, I passed that on, so thank you to Sue. We've also been in touch with the Elks. They've offered to do something with the Elks facility as well, which would be a nice option for using space that's walkable within the village. And then we still have, you know, the options if we have a large scale event to look at the school, which we always have had in our plan. So we'll continue to update those and still probably will have the LAMP on for your May meeting, even though the state asked for it by May 1st. I think it's important for all three boards to have one more look at it before we pass it on. So we'll have that on for your May agenda in case there's any other comments or updates the boards would like to make prior to us filing it with the state. And then there are still a few action items that we're still going over just from things that Sean and I came up with, you know, some issues with the radios and some other communications related issues where we're debuting a couple of large, they're sort of large like Code Red and these other types of communication systems. The school has a separate system that works through their student, their automated student system, so we really can't use them for a large scale call outs if we want to try to reach people. So we're going to look at some options and see if some things make some sense that we might be able to use and help keep people somewhat in the loop. Since a lot of things seem to have occurred on Facebook, we want to make sure that, you know, if we do have a presence on Facebook or have somebody that comes in and helps communicate through Facebook, that people don't use that as a primary means of communication because it doesn't get recorded like 911. And we're very concerned that if people really start to make emergency requests through Facebook, they might end up with a situation where there's nobody monitoring or somebody's not, you know, it's not getting to the appropriate people for response. So we're really trying to make sure people understand, you know, general communications, we're trying to come up with a way to do that, which are non-emergency. And if you still have an emergency of any type, please call 911 because that way it's recorded, it's always monitored, and that way we can make sure that we get a response. So, yes.
Does the Bartonsville Grange have a generator?
It's unclear if it's functioning. So Sean is going to take a run out there and see if they do. One of the things that we have to do if we're going to start partnering with some of these facilities, we have a generator that we test every week and that we maintain every year at our firehouse. And I think we're going to have to, if we're going to partner with some of these places, we've got to sort of make sure that they have that same type of arrangement so that if we do use it, it's up and running during an event. So more to come on those.
Does Elk have a backup generator?
As far as we know, they don't.
I mean, as far as food, they do have at the pizza next door, but the other place I might, you might want to try is the Moose. They have a kitchen downstairs too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And I don't know.
Yeah, the Moose was the other one that contacted us, so we'll talk to them too.
Okay, good. And I don't think they've got a backup on either.
Right. So. If the board. Yeah, that's it. If anybody else has any other questions or comments, please feel free. Like I said, we're still working on things, so more to come.
Okay, let's move on to the rest of the agenda here, and that is the Rockingham Listers Update. How's 4A the impact? That's the one that they're kind of trying to have the state take over with your presence? Mr. Noble, you have the floor.
Yes. I feel like I should be the patient too. That's something that sometimes I'm hard of hearing, but I read this very well. That's the way it goes. I'm going to introduce this and tell you that if you're looking in your path with this page, the front page, is the agenda that I'm going to follow. And I want to keep to that as I may refer to this other document, which is really the purpose of this meeting. Okay? So that's where we're going. And keep this page in the back of it for notes. And if you can, although there's not a big crowd here, it'll get us excited. Keep your questions short because we are offering, any questions that you have that are extensive, we will be glad to answer those questions in another meeting where we're not confined to other business. And just as we have already written several PowerPoint presentations that explain sections of what's in this report, they are not going to be five minutes long. It'll be longer. You get your money's worth. But basically, I want to start by telling you that a year ago, we proposed four solutions to the re-establishing the Listers Board after we lost two members. And we went on and recruited what I consider to be an extremely powerful group, and they're sitting behind me. It's Mike Sack and Todd Egerich. I will tell you that at this moment, their efforts this year are outstanding. In my opinion, if something happened to me today, these two guys could adequately handle the Listers Office on a daily basis. That is something I never could have believed. I will tell you, these guys are experts, and we are well on our way to becoming truly an independent little outfit. That said, when we first met, we decided to look at the actions of the Listers Department to see if it could be improved. And I'm not sure you're familiar with the following term, but we conducted and are still doing it, it'll go forever, a value analysis, value engineering project, which studies everything we do to determine what we're getting out of it and if there are ways to improve. The report that's outlined on your outline is a result of our work today, and I think you're going to find it quite interesting. The first thing we discovered that we were operating in the past as a clerical group, and what we're doing was just being clerks to the state of Vermont and randomly taking care of everything else. After the study, we determined that the Listers Office truly should be a service organization, not a clerical organization. So we've changed their operating procedures. Those procedures have returned, incredible return on our time and the investment which we've taken. And that investment is really not money, it's just, well, it's time that's money, but it was. The value engineering part is to look at what we haven't done, and when we get a new project, we determine the best way to handle it. And the analysis is to look at what we already do and to correct it if it can be improved. So that's the steps we take. There are seven steps. It's a very formal program. It's not a, it's not a meeting of the three of us. Because in order to conduct this, we have to deal with both the people who use our services. And that means that we supply a service to the state of Vermont, I have learned the assessment, but we also supply services to the citizens and to the town offices. That has increased immensely, but the workload on the Listers has dropped off. And the reasons, you'll soon see why that happened. So I'll just start with this list. The first part was the first invention, which you're going to say, why didn't you do this before? I'm not going to answer that question because it involves personalities of the ask. But we started an electronic tracking program where if you come into our office, call us or send us an email asking the question, we immediately record that on our computer system. And that has kept every, every call that comes in, no matter what method, is kept on this call log. And the benefit is, it's reduced the number of calls we don't answer, calls that are forgotten or calls that nobody knows except for one person that answers. We networked our computers so they all, they all get access to this log, and we can actually open them up so that all three of us can look at the same thing at the same time. Or if you call up and ask a question that I had answered before, but I'm not there and either one of these guys is in the room, they'll push the button, they'll get your call, they'll tell you how many times you called, what the answer was, and whether we're waiting for something from you or you're waiting for us. If we can't answer the question, we'll still call you back and tell you we got the call, and it's going to take two days, three days to answer it. So you'll see from the report, when you read it, that our tally, when we called it in the report this year, it's actually for about six months since this has been activated, that we have received 425 such calls, 80% of which were answered on the first day they came in the office. And that's one reason it doesn't take us so much time, because if you come in and ask Mike a question that I answered in the past, he couldn't, he wouldn't know what I did. Right now, all three of us instantly know who called how many times, what's going on, and it just keeps going. But we can push a button, and I think 10 years from now, you can push it, and you'll find out that you talked to me. That saves us an untold amount of time. Also, as we go along, this project has led us to the point where we've modified a lot of things. The next one would be the community outreach. I heard of in the Listers business, we have partnered with a number of outside services. The main one right now that seems to be super effective is SEFC. And the reason for that is very simple. People sometimes ask these questions that we don't deal with. So they run around and run around and nothing happens. Right now, we've partnered with these organizations so we know what they do and what they offer. It's same sometimes that the town can't offer. We can say, you know, we don't deal with that, but SEFC does, here's the phone number. And what it does is it cuts down the number of visitors we get, because when we get a walk-in visitor, they disturb three people. When we get a phone call, they disturb one. And that lets the other two do what they're doing, and it makes us more efficient in what the state thinks we should be doing, which is value property. But that turns out to be 50% of our work. The 50% is dealing with departments and the organization and also the public. Right now, I'd say the public, the departments are half of that, maybe. The departments, because one of the things we've done are pretty good and hopefully better. Hopefully, we will be able to reduce their needs. We've been looking at solar reviews, the solar arrays, there's a lot of monkey business going on in that business. The public is getting just buried with offers from companies that want to install solar systems, but they don't know, the public doesn't know anything other than what the company does. And so we're in a position right now to pretty much walk them through the process and help them decide whether they want to put a solar system on their farm or not. That's something that's difficult, but I will say that Mike Sack has taken that under his wing, and I think he's pretty comfortable with it. The Great River Hydro Program, it's being done by Mr. Sansucci in our, in our office. It is almost finished. As far as value goes, there's only one remaining thing, and we're waiting for the first result which tells them that their license is wrong to do, and that has just now gone into the court system for approval because they ran into a snag. The original first agreement was with New England Power. Hydro Quebec is not New England Power. The license has been flipped back and forth three times in the last two years, and right now, Quebec Hydro is getting that straightened out so that the license to operate this plant belongs to Quebec Hydro, not somebody else. So that's underway, we're not worried about it. The big one we've done here, you'll see the mapping system. We have a new mapping vendor for the maps that are on the web. We have improved it tremendously to the point that you can get a property record card for all of the residential properties almost instantly on your computer. You don't have to do anything, you could do it at home, you don't have to come to see us to get your card. You don't have to see us to get a map, you don't have to get to see us at all. We have not had a visit from an insurance company or a real estate agent in two or four months. We get questions once in a while from agents in another state, in another town, but, and that just cuts the device traffic we have to deal with, with lockets. It used to be, when I first came here, we'd get one lady from down the street every day, Lieutenant 15, and it's like. My system is so active, I saw it the other day, she said they changed my job. I don't have to run up and down the streets. I have a better job because you guys make it possible for anybody to push the line. So that's that thing.
So how does one access that?
You look on the town website and go to the Listers. And if you want, you can do two things, come up and see us, we'll show you how to work it. If you don't want to do that, call us on the telephone, have your computer handy so you can access the web. But Mike has a program now where he can teach you how to operate it over phone.
Is that the same as the state?
No. The state mapping system is not that accurate. Our mapping system is now updated almost daily. And our mapping system is based on surveys, not GPS, and GPS is not always correct.
But I use the state mapping system a lot.
So, well, I'm not going to tell you they're not worth, they're worthless, they're not, but we have all four maps on the web, you can pick them up whenever you want. There's also a new one. A new one, which is the overlays, you know, the put on. Talking to Gary Fox, we put in a new overlay that shows him where the land use properties are, and we'll shortly update that to include trusts, which actually cover the zoning map and show you that some of the property that is thought to be buildable is not. So you can just look at this thing and say, whoops, this is locked up in land.
So there's a link on the town website to this? But we have, need some instructions to use it?
I think a lot of folks have learned how to do it, but Mike.
It's pretty straightforward, there's a link that says GIS map. You click on that, the map comes up, up in the left-hand corner, you've got a search box, you can put a name, you can put an address, parcel ID, whichever you have, and it'll take you right to the location. And then you put on that property, and it'll have attached, it'll have the parcel information, the tax map, the lister card. So it's all residential, we don't have the commercial properties there, but it's pretty straightforward. Usually people call in and we can walk them right through it on the web, and then they're all been running.
Sure. Nice.
And we have one more thing that I think is available on our map. And I use the term LiDAR.
Yeah, tags.
That's TAD's bag.
Because it's like the layers are in there.
You've got LiDAR on it?
There's LiDAR on it. Like the regional maps have it as well, I don't see those.
And the reason for that is that if you're not familiar with this process, it's a radar and laser surveying system that's on a satellite up somewhere up there. And what we can do with that is we can see the, we can see the land without trees. So what we see is a bare land, which shows us literally the property boundaries, the stone walls, and stone walls that have been removed show up on it because if you put a rock on the ground and it makes a divot, this thing remembers it. So we've been able to straighten out some, we've been able to straighten out some questions on land line, where the deal is. It saves a lot of time. We're doing an experiment shortly on one of my properties that, there's a historical thing there somewhere. Mike blocked this land, he can't find it. So we had Ted hook on the LiDAR. There it is. So now he's got to go back and see if it really is there, but it shows it right away, and that was, that particular.
What is it that you're looking for, you know?
A building.
A building that you see.
It's gone.
It's a little.
It's gone. Wow.
But it just, the three of us were watching the screen, and Ted pushed the button, and it went, there it is, it's not what you're looking for, Mike, and he's going, I think so.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, it shows logging roads, ancient roads, and you know, I can find.
And this is now yours. I mean, anyone can use it, any taxpayer can access it.
So is that something you hadn't purchased?
No, we've got it.
Don't ask him why we got it.
These mapping agencies, like you've got the state map, Wyndham Regional Map, like every time that they get a new layer, it gets shared throughout all these companies and it becomes available to get the LiDAR elucidated. There's another one called infrared where all, like the trees all turn red.
Yeah, yeah.
And stuff, and you know, the topographical maps with the 20-foot.
Yeah.
So that, that particular, not just the LiDAR, but the new mapping app, but it is very easy to work with. We've established a pretty good friendship with those guys, and they respond to change. The creation of a map that chooses trust properties and land use properties, it took us what, maybe three days to get the data together to send them. But as soon as we send them the data, they pop it on the website. So we've already found it useful for the water sewer department's been active looking at it. We've had some of the road guys looking at it. So it's just something that we need to pass around, tell them it's available. If they don't understand it, it's easy, give them a call to us, we'll tell them how to work it. And it saves people hundreds of dollars. It saves, saved the road guys a wicked job. They were looking for pipes and things. We don't have pipes, but we have a pretty good idea where the thing are. So if we wanted to use it, the people who use it have the tool to tell them. And what that LiDAR in particular is, it's a learning process on how to read it. You're going to see something, and you need to kind of get your mind in the right frame to understand what you're looking at. Is it a stone wall, a road, or ATV trail, things like that. But they all show up, and we think it's going to be great. I talked with Gary this today, he's going to have to play with it. The reappraisal preparation part, fascinating. We're going to do some, a little more work on that, another subject that's down the water. But we had scheduled a reappraisal for this year. And then when we got together with the new crew and we went to work and started getting ready to do it, we discovered a lot that was not quite right. And one was, we found that we felt that the market was unstable. And that fact that our numbers would not be right, that the state's numbers would be right, not just us, we're not on an island yet. So we postponed that reappraisal and set it up to do it for the year 24, 25. And the reason we moved it, we moved it, as you can see, two years. We wanted to settle, we found that there was one year that threw the thing away off. So if we can eliminate that from the three that we have to use, to see how we can everything improve. So we said, well, wait a second, we just moved off for a year, we're going to get a better set of numbers that are more reliable. So that's why we canceled it and why we're now doing what we call a data verification. What we can do with that, we're taking 300 properties and looking at them right now in order to determine whether our property record cards are statistically valid. If they are, they look pretty good. As this morning, they look pretty good. And we've gone about halfway through it. So we think that knowing that the cards are correct, we can almost do a reappraisal without leaving the office.
What do you mean statistically valid?
Well, let's say that we have the 300 parcels and we find that there are 10 errors. That means that our percentage correct is really pretty good.
Okay.
And if it's pretty good for 300 parcels, it's pretty good for 2,100. So without going crazy, we can pinpoint the ones that are bad. And then we can, from the mapping system now, we can do things that we couldn't do well before. For instance, we can see a picture of a house that you can move on. You can see the roadside picture of that house. We can actually measure those houses on the software. So now we sit around in the snow. We can measure from upstairs and see. If we see a 24 by 24 house and we measure it on a computer, it might say 23 feet, three and a half inches. It's a 24 by 24 house. If we round off, it's an inch. And there is foot. So we can do measurements like that from the office. If you have a building permit, normally now we can see a picture straight down from the sky and see if you finished it or not. We have building permits and you're adding an L. It's not there. This is sitting in the wants of a nice office or a people. So these things are saving us time. It's saving the town money and it's improving the accuracy of the data. And we use the data verification system to check whether the computer system will help or won't. So we actually now, I'm in verification to do both. We look at it with a machine and then say, let's go see the property of this machine as I choose. Sometimes it does, but it doesn't very often. It does when the satellite hasn't gone over in a specific time.
Paul, if someone made you prove into their house, didn't pull a building permit. You spot that at the start?
You can.
We check all building permits three times a year. So we pretty much know what's being built.
So you could catch somebody that's done an illegal build without getting a permit? Just what I cannot.
We can tell what's hanging on your code line.
Yeah. Well, I'd say if you suspect that somebody's done something, they put a ditch on it something without a permit.
Well, you know, it's kind of fun. It's kind of fun. And if you're a scientist like I am, you kind of laugh at these modern calculators that give you nine digits. And everybody's like, oh, that's really accurate. Well, really, they're not. The thing just gives you nine digits because it's got nine places to put a number. It's an average, not a real measurement. And because of your handshake, it changes the venture. But you won't see it flip on the dial. It waits. So what we do, LiDAR measures to one millimeter. Now, that's the thickness of a regular 4x5 card. Not the size, the thickness. It can measure that well. We don't have a tape that does that. And then we round it off to a foot. So, you know, we're not that good. But it's been very powerful. So that tells you about the reappraisal. At this point, we're stalled. It becomes part of the last parts. We're stalled right now because of this act or this legislation that's going through the, trying to go through the House and saying, which you'll see on the bottom, property violation would be rate 48. There is a plan underway to take away the assessing process from the listers and turn it over to the state. It is being seriously opposed by towns, states, people, they, whoever. And so right now, we're in an information providing mode. The state has stopped all the reappraisals. Mainly because of the thing I think we sent them or we showed them that the current market was so unstable, you couldn't tell where it was going. And it's not telling you the truth. So if we reappraise with bad data, we're going to reappraise again in a year when the data improves. And it's just a waste of money. So it finally caught on to that. The money part sold it. And so we're in a neutral position. We applied for, to start this thing. We were not refused. We were just told that, sorry, the whole thing has stopped. We're not doing any towns. There are 165 towns that came up for reappraisal. And thanks to these guys, we were able to find out what's going on. And that's the subject that we'll talk about in a minute. You're going to be glad this is in good shape. If we hear this word from Mark Five, this is a new system that's coming into play throughout the state. They think this year we'll get it. We're playing with it. We're not running dual systems. We're running the old system and the new one to see if we can make it work. The state thought they'd have it up and running three years ago. It isn't running yet. It's because what has other towns and we do something with the new one, it doesn't answer the questions. So we don't use it. But it is being worked on by the state. And when they get it done, we'll switch to that. Now, the part that I want to just spend a minute with, I hope I'm doing well, is the market situation awareness part, which will lead you right into this thing on the 48. So I want you to look and don't panic. I want you to look at these sheets. And the first thing I want to do, if you're not statisticians, is anybody here a real wizard? Well, I'll tell you that two of us are. And Mike is a pro. I have been doing this for 60 years. And Ted is quickly picking it up. But Ted is an absolute pro on the workings of the camera system. So we have pros that are really better than anything I've ever seen. And between the three of us, every Wednesday, we have a battle plan. And it is a battle. The three of us sit down, almost close the door and get some things sorted out. So all three of us are going in the same direction. So that's our Wednesday, early morning clock. You probably won't see it because it's early in the morning and hopefully before the public comes into the office. But I want to show you a little trick, which will simplify your life and you're going to use it forevermore. Most people, when they see these charts, and I'm going to let Mike briefly describe them, but I want to tell you the trick. Most people go after numbers. They start looking at details and the answer is don't. If you really want to understand what any one of these graphs shows you, just look at it from a distance better. If it's far enough away so you can't see the numbers, just look at the lines. If the line is squiggly, it tells you it's not stable. If the line is level, it tells you it is. That's all you need to know. And that will tell you what's going on around you. These first two pages can be a little complicated, but you don't have to be too alert to see that the squiggly lines on this page, this is very unstable. That's your market today in the United States. And our market is falling exactly the same type of curve. It's completely crazy. And if you look at, you'll find a dashed line. You see little dotted lines, the blue? Those are the trend lines. And the trend line indicates the general travel of that crazy line. Okay, it's kind of telling you this is where it goes. So all you have to do is look at that and you see, well, the trend line is going down. The trend line is flat. The trend line is going up. But the actual data, as it comes in by the day or the month or the week, is wiggly. And when it goes way offside, away from that line, you've got a totally unstable situation. And that's why we just don't wish to be afraid. And you want to flip the page. I think these are better. Mike says, yeah. These are our old personal drawings. Start looking at the top of it. And that are the sales in Rockingham for three years. And you can see that little trend line that's zooming up there, the little dashed line. I handed that to Mike and he said, wait a minute. So I said, well, one thing it does is straighten out a misconception about the whole business that goes on in the state of Vermont right now. And specifically, you know, our big bag is rocking. Did you notice the beginning of the trend line on the left-hand side? It almost touches a little bar. That's the beginning is April 1st, 2018. Okay? And it's going up to April 1st, 2022. That's the three years we're studying at the present moment. You see the trend line is like that. What you're going to notice is interesting. We continue that trend line on the left side to go back four more years, just to see what's happening. We've been very stable. So on 30 to 34 houses, valid sales every year for five years. The line is nearly flat. And all of a sudden, just in the middle of the year 2018, you'll notice it's starting to go up. And you see it continues up. Until right now, we're up at about 80 properties here. So our sales have gone up from 38 to 80. That's what you're seeing. All these purchases you see. Interesting thing is, if you can see it, if you hold the line enough away, this is a trick, hold it away, you're going to see it. And that line is not straight. That line is beginning to drop. Sales are actually beginning to drop. So what that does, it doesn't tell us anything. It makes us ask a question, why? Number one, COVID didn't start this last. COVID came along in it because COVID didn't start until 2019. So something else happened. Michael dug into this. And we think we found most of the reasons. Part of it's economics. Part of it is the fact that as they bought houses, we had less and less inventory and it was hard to buy one. If we do have a housing shortage, if you notice, all of the estate agents stopped adding in the newspapers. NCI, Lev and Cillo and the rest of those guys, they're not advertising locally anymore. They're advertising on the internet. Cillo is using our data to publish their ads. But that's why you're seeing our state fires. Everything we have for sale in this town is advertised nationwide. We have people coming into California that have not seen the house they buy. We have, Rick knows, we have a house on X and O that told us the people from California who came up and couldn't sign it. And they asked a neighbor to take them there. And when the guy got out of the car and wife came out of the car, he said, honey, take a look at what we bought. That's what's going on. That house had five bids in three hours. Can you imagine that? That house had five bids in three hours. It's unbelievable. The market has changed. Then if you take just the concept you saw with that curve, look at the next one. What you see on that one is you probably think, look what's happening. This is a thing going up and up and up. And you notice it's flattening out and then it's starting to drop. This is a projection. Okay? So what we knew when we canceled that first thing was, wait a second. This market is self-correcting. But if you leave it alone, it's going to be better. I want you to give them a little speech about that. The next thing is this, although the last graph is classic. Here you've got a trend line that looks like it doesn't mean anything. And the game here is, these little guys up here that are popping around on the top. Then you've got a cluster down here. Well, guess where the other state fires are? They're in the top. And what happens is, there is a trend for local houses that's very reliable. Been there for a long time. The outer staters hit it because of price. They paid a lot of money. It's a different market. The market for expensive houses is in Massachusetts and Connecticut. And when I worked as a broker in the real estate business and I took my apprenticeship at one of the best, he told me, I always go for that, look for the outliers. I said, why? He said, if you see outliers and it turns out to be something that's always purchased by a guy from Connecticut or something, you advertise a sale and they hire the current, not in the old sort of files. So we actually had different advertising locations. We were people. Well, if it tells you anything, we sold more houses in Grafton than anywhere else. We kept our sales stuff. We never changed it because we knew they were only going to last five years to sell it again. And we advertised in the current, in the New York Times, in the Boston papers. And if you go to Grafton, that's a loser. So even within the small area, markets change. And this is why we've come to the 480 business. We're suggesting to the state that the only way you can keep track of this is live here. The only way you can do a good job as a trader is to live here and to report to the citizens of this town, not to somebody who's talking to somebody in Montevideo who has never been here. To me, that's the real nut. The other nut is, it just seems everywhere I have researched, that everywhere it says, the people who praise should be residents of the town, voted on by the townspeople and represent the townspeople. The town has to be involved. And that's what we're going to lose. And everybody else is pitching in and saying, wait a minute, guys, this is the wrong answer. We need the town to stay in it.
What's the rationale for wanting to change it?
The rationale appears to be that the 165 towns that are required to do a reappraisal, it overwhelmed the appraising business. A lot of towns hire an appraiser to come in and help their listers. There aren't that many appraisers to handle 165 towns. The state thinks they're going to start a whole new department to do this. You can't believe the expects. Because then we say, well, how do you do readings? Is that guy going to come down from up here and sit here in front of BCA? Well, we didn't figure on that. Well, there's a couple dollars spent. And it keeps going where they have totally underestimated what they're going to have to spend. Whereas when we're here doing these settles, these studies all the time, we literally can, once we get our stabilization stuff to make sure our cards are right, we don't have to run around. We don't need to measure that house. Quite frankly, they don't change that much. If we measured it last year, it's probably going. If we measured it last year, it's probably going to be the same this year.
Although there was a legislative listening session at the library on Saturday. And I shared some of the concerns you and I talked about with Wendy Harrison, Senator Harrison, and Nadler was there and Leslie was there and who else, Michelle. I said, I cited an example of our lister's office and what a fabulous job you guys do and how, she said, most towns don't have the kind of expertise that Rockingham has. All these other towns are struggling. And I agree with you, the state solution is absurd or create a giant bureaucracy and it would be complex response of that. But that was her response. And I'm hoping that, if you've written to her.
I spent an hour with her yesterday on the top three. And I kind of wanted to, but this is the next part here, what have been required. We request a ballot, I think, tomorrow, taking to the other. Was that we get the select board involved, get the people in the town involved, write these guys a letter, tell them how you feel and why. Because we want to swing it back to the towns. We know the listers, including ourselves, have a long way to go. There's a lot more we can do to improve our performance. We've done a lot in a year, but we can still keep going. We have a lot of things coming that we're not going to talk about because we're still in the value analysis thing. But when we get past that, we will see how it works. Work to keep it, doesn't work to change it, but that's a local thing. And we're trying to involve, you'll see this year, well, you should see one thing right away, if you come into the town hall, the listers are now local people. They don't sit in the office. We're going to find them walking around talking to the treasurer, talking to the town clerk, talking to Gary Fox. And don't think that's an idle walk. It's not. But we're listening to what they want and then we will come right back and say, can we change the map to improve Gary Fox's work? And that's what we do. You know, can we improve the data we have to help the treasurer? We've done that in a way that's secret. We spend more time with old people, senior citizens, out of state fires and vendors. I don't know how many people we found that had failed to file their homesteads. Mike is a homestead guru. He gets every morning. He's the voice of our office. When that phone rings, it's on his desk and he's the answer man. If he can't answer it, he just turns your on, pushes the button, either switches it, something, a pin or speakerphone and you have the board talk. It's here right away, within minutes. And that's why we can solve these things on the same day.
Paul, one of the things that I'm starting to work on through the Wyndham Regional Commission is exploring the possibilities of inter municipality shared services. And one of the things that they started doing some surveys a couple of years ago and dropped it, that many of the smaller towns said is they would like to jointly hire appraisers and listers because they don't have them in their towns.
And that is being done.
Yeah, a couple of towns are already doing it and we're trying to promote that more widespread. How do you feel about that? Do you think that works well?
In my mind, that here goes, you saw the four steps you can take in a town. The most expensive was to have your full-time employee with the secretary. If there's been no one. And then you get to the listers staying in their job and then become responsible for the values. They participate in getting them. That's the big nut. If you don't do the appraisal, you're not going to be able to do it. But there are towns that, I think, Westminster, Putney and Battleboro have hired somebody to assist their people as a group. I had thought one time that partly organized, we could handle, honestly, we could handle Westminster ads and Grafton along with us. We have the capability and we probably pick up one or two people from their towns to be in the board. But it hasn't come to pass. It hasn't been discussed. But the problem with listers is they're part higher. Most of us all.
That's true chickens.
But the point is, to become what I am takes 13 years of study. That's wrong. You shouldn't be able to do the same thing in two or three years. The reason is the training is terrible. And the training is terrific, but the organization of training is terrible. I'm having that dispelled to you at least of that. It may be where around it. I have to work on it more, but the I double O A is now offering reports online. The question is, and you can take the test online. So you can take the course, pass the test without going through a craft. And you can take them as fast as you want to take them. That's not the way it's been done. They offer three a year. You wait, you better take game game. It's a long time. If you can find it. I had to go out of state to brush a menu of food. And at that point in time, the state wouldn't pay for our out of state grading. So I had to buy my own tickets to go there. It runs about $2,000 a course, we've been talking about that. That's not a fair thing. It needs to be changed, but it could be changed. On the other hand, if you do what you're talking about, you can get an appraiser who is, if he's trading assessment, not appraising, could hand carry a board of listers through the process. You know, he would know the laws. He would know the, maybe, you know, the equations that go with it. That's the project and the act. But it could be done and it's not a foolish idea. But those people, if you looked at the four steps, have to be hired by the town, not the state. Nowhere can I find where there's anything that says the state hires appraisers. And the reason for that is, the person that comes into town as an appraiser has to take on the roles of a lister as the same authority as a lister. But it works for the citizens of the town. And that makes all the difference in the world. If you work for the state and we keep talking about put the fox in the chicken house, who checks on this guy? The very guy that writes the rules checks it. And if they don't like the solution, well, we just change it. And they just did. Because you'll see in the next document that we have here, the reason that 165 towns all of a sudden, on the same day, triggered the alarm to go reappraise was that the state changed the bar. The state changed the rules and dropped the numbers to a whole different level. And somebody that was sitting four or five points away from the red line where you have to reappraise, when they moved the target, they were over the red line by two points. If they had left the doggone thing alone, nobody would have had to reappraise. That's the nut that killed it. And that's the nut that the person who proposed it said, this is a crisis. It's not a crisis. But you made it a crisis.
Paul, what's the practical effect of freezing reappraisals? How will it affect Rockingham?
Of doing what?
How will, the fact that the state has shut down all reapraisals? So we won't change our, anything about how we do business?
Yeah.
So property, but the property, prices change and we don't capture that? Or do we capture that? Your process captures that?
Okay, let me tell you about this little term equalization. When we get done with a reappraisal, the value is 100%. Let's say this CLA, which is the number that scares everybody, which shouldn't. CLA is the meaningful number. Let's say 75. That would definitely put you in the hole within a minute. No matter what the state did, that would put you in the hole. What happens is when you're all done and you have the CLA of 75 and your values, it means you're 75% listed by us of the real sell-ones. That's what all it means. So what you do is you divide the sell-ones by 75, it comes out to 100 and you equalize the values. That's how it starts statewide. That's the heavy math. This is third grade, maybe no. In today's world, it's probably second grade. That's the math. It means nothing. Because when they equalize the grand list, you've got everybody that 100%, no matter where you are, Grafton, Athens, Russmaster, it's still 100%. The other thing that's wrong with the CLA is it gives you a value on April 1st, a certain year. That's what it's for. It doesn't tell you what it was six weeks before, six weeks after. It just tells you what it was on April 1st. So you really don't get a history. Whereas if you do what I show you with these graphs, you see that this is a timeline. There's actually three dimensions in those graphs. You know, how big is it? Where is it? And where's it going? So it shows you where it's going. Now, if you look at it and you say, this is an aberration, something has moved. Something outside hit that thing and got it off course. And there's where Mike was a pro. He's dug into this thing. And these graphs are samples. We have pages of studies like that that kept coming back with the same answer. So what we did, as bad people would be, this is a letter that we wrote to the Vermont editor in response to a question they asked the house to clarify. And it will tell you, basically, what we're telling everybody else. So what you've done is, you panicked that something you didn't need to panic. And that's where I think you guys come in. But this thing may have put us in more danger than it's taken us out of. Not this, but the action of this group. Now, back to your Wendy thing. We were laughing this morning in the office, but I talked to her for an hour. She kind of said, now, how come nobody told me this? Maybe we should look at it. And Mike said, yeah, which way is she going to vote? The way to vote is mail in the box, pile it up on the desk and express an answer. That's it. I threatened her. I didn't threaten her. I told her. We're sending her a lot of this stuff so she can take it. She promised she would hand deliver it to the Senate Finance Group. So that's true. I think she'll do that. But the deal is, they respond to paper. And they have the comments on the phone. The comments, they're forgotten, they're old age, you can't refer to them. When we send them letters and we send them reports, they'll never get a report like this from anybody else. Nobody does this except those guys on the market. But we like it.
Something that I brought up with you before that I'd love to see addressed somewhere, and I was told that it comes from one high and nothing to do about it, is why commercial residential is not taxed differently than non-commercial residential.
You're speaking of like bed and breakfast or?
No, I'm just thinking of like, and I sent an example to Camilla and you a couple of years ago. There's a house right here, that's five apartments in it. Right next door, house same age, same amount of the land. House next door had one entire man living in it. He paid more taxes than the owner of that five apartment building.
He should have. He did. Then he better come see us.
But I sent it to Camilla and she said that. Because of the way we have to appraise. We can't appraise it on the income they're getting. It can only be on what we think they could sell it for.
That's not true.
I would round around.
I'm sorry. It's not right.
Okay, well, maybe when you look at their cards, you should look at that sort of thing. Because I've been looking on the Vermont GIS map, I've found many, many examples of that.
When we appraise a property, we appraise it three ways. We do it with the cost approach, how much is the cost to build this thing? We use a market comparison, take a look. And then we take those two, that's the dominant ones, the market and that. So what happens is if they don't agree, then what we have to do is go back and reconcile those values. And that means this is a little judgment call where you decide that, I'm sorry, the cost approach does not apply to this building. We can't do it on use, but a commercial property, five apartments is called a commercial property. So that is the standard. And the big one there is, if you notice, if you try to pull up a commercial property on the website, you'll get very little. Reason is it disposes of the tax law and stuff. We don't do that. We never, we never release financial data that anyone makes up.
Right.
How if they're getting five, five rental units from that building? How do you track, because that's a, rental unit kind of produces as part of its values, right? So doesn't that be part of the equation?
It is.
All right, why I want to keep everybody here on that. I will, I will send you, Mom, this, this example. And speaking of, there are many others down there.
You're to blame for half of this, you know? You guys don't know the story, but this lady said, what do you guys do? And this is your answer. We did listen to you.
What are you doing here, homestay? I may have to go to you. I'm not sure what we do.
I think, Mr. Gold. We talked earlier this evening. I think it's now your turn. I'm not going to speak for the board.
What, what the direction this looks like is if they would like to kindly have a letter from us as a flood port to these people and say, we don't go along with your decision.
Yeah, sounds good.
So.
I think you got to support that you want the local board to do this.
Correct. We support it. We support listening. I think, I think you guys are heading in the right direction. It's all set. I hope we just found, there's five towns in Southern Vermont that have hired, they've looked at. Because we go back before you guys were in an educated group. We hired an outfit from Massachusetts. And you remember the horror show that happened there? It took two years to straighten out the appraisals that they messed up. Because they could never show up, but we showed up. You called on the phone and that's how you got your answers, was on the phone. Nine times out of 10 was, what we got is that, that's what we straightened that. You had no argument. So, you know, this thing of hiring an outside appraiser is crazy. The only saving grace we have is, this is the latest DLC printout from today. I just got this in the mail and they're going to do two delays. One, the first study is supposed to be done by December 15, 2023, whether it would work. That's on a six-month implementation. The next one is another year, December 15, 2024. And they're going to study in 18 months, if they do it in 18 months. So they really are just out there stepping on eggshells to see how many they're going to break before they really jump off the bridge and hang their toes on the shore.
You know, I've got that thing today.
Did you notice that ballot? I actually missed wondering if you were talking about.
Okay, so what happens is PBNR, the property evaluation group, that is part of the tax department, has said to the legislature, we don't think it's right. Here's a guy that's going to do it. He's, no, I don't think it's right. I can't do it. I don't have enough people. Which is true. Which is true. They don't have enough people to handle what we're doing today with it. So here we got the guys who are actually in the trenches. Don't do it. Then we got the towns saying, and the towns complained earlier, way early. And everybody said, ha, ha, ha. Well, ha, ha, didn't work. And they said, no, you're gonna do appraisal right now. And that's when a hundred sixty-five popped up. And they refused to let us say, wait a minute, this market is so screwy right now that we don't really trust the numbers we're getting on sales. Now, there's a lot of reasons for those numbers. And if you want to spend a second, this guy knows. He has gone into the darkness.
I've gone on pretty long. I don't know if anybody else has any questions happy to answer. But, you know, I think, I do think, Mom, this is a function of the politicians are, you know, taking a line and taking it straight up into the right. And we don't think that's gonna continue. We think it's an aberration. They're trying to fix something that isn't broken. There's, you know, this is all part of that situation awareness. You have to understand how we got here. You have to understand where are we going. And we do not believe that this is a normal situation. It's an aberration brought on by the the government spending and the, and the liquidity injected into the system by the Federal Reserve. That's not sustainable. They're reversing it now. We're seeing it start to impact the markets. So, you know, it's a classic example. People trying to fix something that they don't understand. And we're trying to help them, you know, just chill out, and it's gonna prove itself. Don't try to make a quick fix here, which is actually gonna make things more worse.
Well, I think by postponing all this, it needs to be limited to those companies. They'll probably evident by then.
That's exactly.
It, it should be very evident, especially with interest rates going up again, you know?
And the problem is, in one respect, we have conflicting interests. When the interest starts up, it's hurting the people with the older income. They can't get all. We're getting. So what do we see? I, I believe women, consumers, confidence index. And that thing is hovering around eighty. That's a danger mark. Above eighty, they buy houses. Below eighty, they buy refrigerators. They go for the commodities they put in the house, but they don't buy the house. And that's where we're, we're down there now. We're just bobbling around. It's not gonna go up right away. It doesn't look like it. Mike has spotted that. I've spotted it. And I do it from a different angle. I'm not a financial analyst. But I do have a master's degree in business economics, and I look at pennants succeed or not from a different set of numbers. The answer is it can't. So they raised that. Now, why do these people come and tramp it in and spend all their money on houses? Because they have the cash. Those, these sales are cash sales. They just sold the seven hundred thousand dollar house down near Boston. They bought a four hundred thousand dollar house here. What am I gonna do with that? Just read. That's the question they're asking. The other thing is the internet occurred in two thousand nineteen. The high-speed internet. The buyer's the younger. If they could work here.
And they're not gonna have that. The Fed's trying to correct the inflation problem using the surge hammer for interest rates. But that knocks out the low income liar who needs to borrow. They still have a balance sheet, which is nine trillion dollars, up from a trillion dollars post two go to two thousand and eight correction, then they threw it on it after COVID. So COVID was related in a way, but it was more a function of the reaction of the Federal Reserve. And all that liquidity is still in their system. And until they pull that liquidity out, or they continue to have cash buyers, we're gonna continue now an inflation problem. And that's not gonna be politically acceptable. So the Fed's got a long way to go to slow things down, but they will do it. They've already started to do it. We've seen the growth rate, year-over-year growth rate of prices nationally, which was running about twenty percent year-over-year in the middle of last year, towards the tail end of last year. That slowed. So prices are already paused. Volume, the number, the volume numbers slowed. Prices slowly. So those are the signals you watch for for the beginning of a change, and it's coming.
I'm gonna tell you something, Mom. There's a little bit of pride. Everybody put your hands up. You can't get this data in any way. You will not find any professional appraiser that does it. You're looking at a unique group, and I'm so happy to be these guys. It's every day I have to say you're doing a good job. I can't say, why are you doing? I love it. I come in here after Ted says, here's what I've done for you today. What are you talking about? Well, I'm ahead of you by a yard. I know you're gonna ask it, so here's your answer. It's never happened before. But that's what's going on upstairs. And you guys can be proud of it, too, I tell you. They are marvelous guys. We lucked out. We hit the, we hit the right button.
Well, you get credit for hiring them.
I don't know. You guys hired them. We elected them. We do it. We have them. They're already, in terms of voting on stuff in the office, we're all equal. Nobody has power above the other one. It's, it's a thing. The difference is, I think, for sure, when we walk out of that door and you're in the other room, there's only one answer. The battle furns in the room, but as far as the public and people concerned, they're going one way. We'll listen to everybody. We'll change, but we're gonna go one way. Not have me say something, he says something. Well, the guy across the street's got a better idea. Okay, that's, that's my thing. I think that your your chairman is in command. You guys take the ship. And help us get through this mess. Let me sure, no matter what the state does, under the it's best to say whatever you got.
Action steps. Would like us as a board to pass maybe a resolution about four eighty? Yeah, and communicate that to our legislators.
And we'll all even make a better deal. I've been told by Wendy, the best way to get stuff there is by email. I told her it'll clog up your machine. She said, no, it won't, because the state, if we send it to the right address, they have a state, like, post office email. You can't clog that thing. It's too big. So we have all those email addresses. If you create a document, if you would like, you can send it. Good. And we will send it to the people who should get it, including Wendy. All right.
All right.
Okay, guys, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Have a lovely.
Well done.
Okay, so it seems to be a consensus that we need to have a resolution or a letter or something going back to support our listers and add to a poll. The state can probably break this. Yeah, so. Do we wanna have Scott write something up and you can sign it? And then they can send it or?
That sounds good.
Then you can write back to her, let's see, they can get the, you know, just what, what they'd like to see. And go there.
That's great. The letter, the letter name they wrote to Digger has got a lot of access.
Yeah, it does. And I think it does have to be that dramatic. I think it can just be a very basic.
Yeah.
You support, you know, local election of listers and.
There's more and more reasons. They show me a few letters, and I have some of the same thing. How are you gonna do an appraisal? How are you gonna do a deal? We're gonna have to go to Montpelie to make a deal, or you guys gonna send someone down here?
It'd be a Zoom. They'll do it by video.
We got eight people in our office. How are they gonna run them? It's COVID. COVID, you're big. Okay, let's move along down the agenda here. Appointment of the cemetery committee, appointment to the cemetery committee. There's a Tyson E. Taft that has sent in the letter of interest. So that's another one we've got. That made up four, five. Five we got. So that should be the last one we want to point. So if they take a motion to appoint Tyson Taft to the cemetery committee.
So who? I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Tyson E. Taft to the cemetery committee. The fifth appointment, so they should be ready to proceed the conversation soon.
Yeah, I'm all set. Yeah, I'm still here.
All right. Any comments? If good, all those in favor of the motion would say aye.
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 Those nay? Or if you're gary. And let's move on to the updated sidewalk plan for the depot bridge.
I guess.
There's a map in your packet from Drives.
So basically, after the last board conversation with engineers and some of the issues that the board raised, the designers from V H B went back and made some changes to some of the pedestrian areas so that you can see now where they've added some crosswalks and done some things that the board had asked them to take a look at. As well as, that I also left at your places tonight, just a very rough beginning landscape plan that would sort of accommodate the changes that, that were also being, these design changes that you're seeing here as well. So they're moving ahead. Basically taking into consideration the vast majority of the items that the board had brought to their attention.
So it looks like they're okay with trees now.
He's looking at that as an option. Again, that's a concept plan, Bonnie. So I don't wanna go and say that's exactly it, but they're working on it.
It was a bit of a trust with some people having assumed that all the trees in the September Park are gonna be cut down. I don't think that's ever been the case in plan.
Don't have a full design yet, specific to how that's gonna work. I think once this is done, they'll look at that as well and come back to us as part of the overall landscape plan. There will be some trees that'll have to be moved.
Well, we knew, we discussed a couple that were definitely in the way of this and that.
Just because of the way the road has to be accommodated and then.
But it's not, it's not gonna be completely void of trees.
That's not my understanding, no. My understanding is you gotta try to preserve the ones they can and accommodate, you know, some new planting with the new design.
Yeah. I think we need to have a concentrated effort to have them concentrate on getting that back, that park back as close as to where it is. It's never gonna be the same. But if we don't push it, then they're gonna go in there and just take out what they want.
Well, yeah, I'm sure. It's easier.
You may not get any back.
I'm sure. So I'm, I'm just like, one thing I wanna, wanna try and squelch the rumors.
Yeah.
That people are going around saying, hey, they're gonna cut down all the trees.
I saw that email. You go to get that one? Yeah.
Yeah.
I forwarded it. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and for another thing, just, you know, keep it uppermost in our minds as we go through all these iterations. Watch out. And they keep saying, oh, we'll discuss landscaping later, later, later. I, I don't, we've gotta keep it part of the conversation all the way.
Well, Canal Street was important for them to get to a design final stage because that's gonna be the portion with all the utility relocation. That really drives a lot of the rest of their design.
Yep.
So that was important. And there, you know, there's a lot of detail that still has to get finished. They still haven't finished, for example, the discussion of the bridge railing because the state person that's involved apparently hasn't been available and won't be available until sometime in May. So we're still waiting on that information as well. So we're not, we're not done, done. We still have more work to do.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just emphasizing that we need to really.
I think that, so what we, you know, all the input that was given already is already showing, you know, they're already, you know, making a comment.
Yeah, it's good. I mean, it's good. I'm delighted to see this.
I think that there's nothing wrong with, you know, just pushing back a little bit, you know, and being kind of like, you know, hey, wait a minute, you know, you know, just make sure that you're looking at, you know, all their aspects of this. And, you know, we don't just get, you know, like, just highway, like a, you know, we don't want like a, like a super highway, you know, down through the middle, you know?
But Scott, this is great. They really did listen to us.
They've been trying very hard.
Really blessed.
Yeah, I know.
We listened to and they reacted in equal ways.
Yeah. So we gotta just keep the dialogue going.
So it's, it's, we're cooking the can down the, down the field anyway, so.
But it's going in a positive direction. I think the board should feel pretty good that things are, you know, being listened to and being worked through and they're being very reasonable.
So I'm just gonna say it, but I think that with the pedestrian bridge, I personally think that we're passing up a real opportunity there to really do something that is beautiful and striking by not painting it. I think the galvanizing, you know, while it might be practical and maintenance free, I think that, you know, in long term, to paint that bridge, you know, in some, you know, striking bright color, you know, like, you know, a bright green or, you know, bright red or something, it turns into a sculpture. Or yellow, yeah, something like that. It turns into a sculpture over water. I think that the value of that to what we're, our vision for the island, you know, to really rejuvenate that area. A bridge is the best place-making element you can have. It might make it, you know, an expensive thing or whatever, but I think that it would have so much impact in, you know, activating that space over there, you know, that would become such a focal point. And have this this beautiful, you know, sculptural arch, you know, that's highlighted in a really striking color over the, over the canal. And it really makes that, you know, that grounding centerpiece for the vision of all the rest of this development we want to create.
I totally agree with you, but the terrifying things that they've told us about, you know, fifteen years from now or something like that, is, is, is really terrifying. And that's why I brought up a few meetings ago, can we somewhere, people have painted these bridges. And talk to somebody, or a couple of someites hopefully, that have gone through this and decided to go with, think, how, how's it lasted for you? I mean, they tell us, oh, ten years, you know, where, where's the evidence of that? Could we, could we get some statements? Could we find some places, some towns that have done a painted bridge? And has it proved to be a mess, a big mistake? Or is it holding up well?
Well, there's a lot of painted bridges out there. I mean, the whole idea of doing, you know, a galvanized bridge is such a very recent phenomenon. You know, if you look at any bridge from, you know, ten years ago, you know, they were, they were all painted. It's just a traditional thing. You know, like, you're gonna find way more bridges that are painted than what we do that are gonna be galvanized.
I would suggest that when you talk to the historic preservation person, that you ask that very specifically because any bridge that was painted was probably historic in nature, more so than a recent bridge. And if there is some experience with it, at least they can give you some locations and what the real experience is.
That's what I really.
And I don't know the answer to that because every bridge is so unique and different. I don't, I don't even venture a guess as to, you know, we all know different bridges, but.
But we have a special problem with the canal there, too. You know, has it stopped?
Water, yeah, water's not a help, for sure.
You know, that, it's real water under there, and it's related to a much larger system that's extremely important.
But I think we can keep that conversation, at least talk to the historic preservation people, maybe even send them an email. I, I know that they're not around, I think, till, what, the sixth of May or something like that, I believe.
Something, yeah.
So we can carry that conversation.
I'd just look into it a little bit further than to just say, okay, well, guess we, guess we can't do that, you know?
Yeah, I don't have a specific, I couldn't give you a specific place and a specific experience. I really can't.
So a historic preservation, is that part of the trend or do you mean, or separate?
The person that's going to be the historic preservation person from the state is going to be weighing in on the bridge railing discussion as a state person.
Those people, yeah.
I think the idea would be to ask them to do some research and see if there are some places that they could.
Well, can, can you S M? Or should we S M? Or should I S M?
Yeah, we can't get to them until May.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on a sabbatical or unavailable. I'm not quite sure, but they're not around to talk to.
Can we just add that to future stuff?
We'll add that to the list. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I'm saying it as a perspective of someone who's going to be probably the one person who is actually still here when the thing is ready to be repainted.
You'll think, you'll think we're.
And I'm the one who's going to be looking at the bridge. And I'm the one who's going to be looking at the bridge rail.
So you're going to pick up the tab, right?
Pretty important, personally, yes, I mean, they want, they want to yell at somebody, you know?
You know, one thing to be said, we've, we've already made a decision last meeting that we're going to go galvanize. Now we're going to waffle again. We can't keep waffling from one side to the other because we're never going to get to the finish line if we don't.
So could I, one point? A lot of, a lot of these charities are putting lights on bridges to make them, and, and, and it's really attractive and it makes it a focal point and it's inexpensive relatively. It's just an idea, but a lot of towns are doing that, big, big and small.
Okay, let's go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the results of the 2023 pack sale. And you have a listing in your packet and I totally agree with the statement that Scott made to recognize the hard work of the finance office.
They did a great job.
Did a great job there and Scott. Didn't hurt the operation either, so.
No, I didn't get in the way, that's my job.
So kudos to Liz.
Yes.
Great piece of work she did.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of money came in there, look at that, a lot of money.
Yes, it was definitely worthwhile.
When you look at the back totals.
Writing $45,000 checks for.
Right.
And that's definitely very much our, you know, what we want is for people to pay their taxes, we don't want it to go to tax sales.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
So it says Brothers in Corp, is that, is that 90 Rock and Hand Street? Was that sold?
I didn't put the actual.
I don't think it was, I think, I don't think it was, that was, that, nobody's been on that one. The one on Sherbiere there, that one was, that one was paid off. It was bought, we had a good bidding war on that one. But eventually they came in to pay their tax, I think it was a couple of weeks after, so the guy lost that one.
One what, you're talking about 90 Rock and Hand?
Albert got sold, hasn't been redeemed yet. Levelly, that's the one that Town bought. That's the one up on, up in Harrison.
Right.
And Simons is the one I'm a favorite for, that one was sold.
So Brothers in Corp was what? That was one.
I don't, I don't believe it was sold.
That's the one I think that's in the square.
Well, no, that's.
No, that's, Brothers in Corp is the one, Brian on, McAllister owns this diner.
I thought it was the tattoo, yeah, more of the tattoo guy down there, I don't remember which one is which. I'd have to look at the parcel IDs to tell you specifically. I don't know it by the names.
Okay.
But.
So do you know that it was, the diner?
Pretty good, pretty sure that's who it is.
And this will happen every year now?
Well, that's the next.
I talk about that, alright.
I know, you wanted to get out of here, I agree with you. My, sorry, when I told, when it comes to me, I gotta control Paul because he'll call forever. We got the information, but anyway. All right, the next item is the social agencies appropriation policy. As copy in your packet and I've already kind of expressed some thoughts to Scott about it.
Well, there's two different ones here, right? There's appropriations policy and then there's the one about the social services review, so there's two different things here.
Right.
Right. The biggest change here, Peter had asked about. The one thing that we had to change, there was a state law change, was the 47 days before the annual meeting. So that was the actual, we had to change the policy just to meet the state guidelines for the requirements for the notice period. So we've done that. So that was the point of this first piece that, that was to be, to be adopted. And then the second piece, which sort of mirrors that, and the one that Peter had raised some questions about was some other, we basically took this from another community, this is a process that they did when they did their five year review. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty good process, pretty comprehensive. The issue that, that Peter had was I had just given it an arbitrary amount of funding request of $1,000. And Peter thought that maybe it needed to be lower than that, that's certainly up to the board how they want to do that. It was just a matter of trying to pick a number so that, you know, I think right now we have 26 or 27 recipients, I think, for the 93,000 that we spend or 95,000. So, I mean, I don't think you want a list of 50 or 60 people where a ton of them are getting 500 or 300 or 200. I mean, you can, you can sort of become absurd with some of these things. So that was just an arbitrary number, so certainly that's up for any kind of modification.
Why do we think it should be lower even?
Well, I, because there's a few of them on there that are almost duplicates of each other. They're in the 5, 6, 8, $100 range. But if you get enough of those, they will line up. So I, if you're going to do, if you're going to do, run them through a committee, screen them with a, with a policy, then I think all of them should be screened out, sorted out.
Makes sense.
I mean, to me, if you put them in the budget, then the next one, who's going to be the next one that's going to get stuck in? Soon they're going to be all in the budget and you're not going to be able to vote whether you want it appropriated or not.
Right, 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 right.
And that's the reason why, that's why, and I, I've been through this process on a committee before and it works. They don't like it, but it does work, you get, at least that our policy was pretty loose when we did ours. I mean, it's not like the one that you sent out on Weatherfield, they were, they were, they spelled everything out, they didn't miss anything. And, and which I think we should do. On Paul's and some of that one, you might want to send that out so we can discuss that again with the rest of the board so they can see that unless they, did you send it to everybody?
Basically, we adopted their, I think the second piece is the one, Peter, that was the one from Weatherfield.
Yeah, right.
Piece, right. That's in there, we just adopted it to put Rockingham on there.
So what will it look like here when, so we will make, say we get 20 people applying, we only have enough money for 10 weeks. How does that win away pick three?
I guess there's a couple of things the board has to decide, right? Certainly you guys have the right to limit. You can, you can say we're, we're going to put a hard cap on a number, you can let organizations come in with their requests and then make determinations based on proposals. So you can leave it as a soft cap, it's really up to the board how they want to do it.
I think a lot of time, I mean, if every organization made its pitch.
Well, like I said, you got 20 some odd already now that you're supporting. You can assume most of them are coming in, right? I would assume.
Well, they, if they put money in the past, they're certainly going to knock them or appear.
Right.
They're going to. It is the, and the reason you screen them is to find out how many are actually, you know, interplaying and, and, and duplicating the service. And we've got some of those out there. And if you find out where the, where the money's coming from and if they're servicing other towns, the question gets asked, well, is that other town still kicking in the thing? Or, or not, then what happens is they come from the soft of Bleeding Hearts and Rockingham and we just sign on to them and pay whoever wants the money. Without any question. I mean, I mean, I can remember we had, it got out of hand to a tune of $120,000 at one point, services. And that's, now that's two, two cents and two and a half cents on, two and a quarter cent on a budget.
Well, it's getting up that rate again, actually.
So like Scott said, there's two sort of ways to attack it is to, you know, put a stamp on it, but what's the number you're going to pick? You've got two items on the air for those, senior center and a nursing, that's 50,000 right there. Say you're going to do 50 grand, the rest of them are out the door, you're not going to.
I, I had a question for arts organizations, too, would they qualify?
Because I was there with 501(c)(3), I think that was one of the requirements, I believe. Right, because you have to show your, your 501(c)(3) determination letter, you have to show your 990, which is all again related towards your tax, your, your tax exempt status.
Would there be a subcommittee that could process these and make a recommendation to all of us?
That's what we had before.
We had every, four of them, every one of them.
Well, no, no, we, we, you know, we would have like, I think we had three, three person board, we had, because I was on it, and I'm not sure if I was on, I, I know I was on the board, so I had to have been a representative of the board.
Yeah.
And then we had some, a couple of people in the public.
Yeah. That makes sense.
That wanted to, wanted to get on.
Yep, but you probably are looking at, in all honesty, you probably don't want to do more than four or five of these at a time, right? Because they're just going to get.
We did, we set up, we set it up time to them committed, you know.
Right, so you're looking at, you know, four or five meetings at a minimum to get through.
To that committee, you know, the application to the committee before they showed up.
Right.
So we could, we could look over this stuff, so you're not sitting there reading, requiring. If it is short, meeting up.
Yep.
So. That would be my, my suggestion anyway, having done.
Yeah, so do we put that in yet somewhere?
And to be a, a review committee, and the, the review committee would make recommendations to the board for board.
Yeah.
The other thing you might want to consider too is you want to give them a, a field process if they get denied at the board level. Kind of redundant, I mean, if you're denying it once, why do you?
Well, I think their denial rights would be they would come to town meeting and ask to be funded. So that's their ability to get funded if they're not, if they don't get through the committee process, that would be their ultimate.
Right. And also if they ask for $20,000, we said we can give you 15, that's the only thing that could happen.
They can come to town, again, they can come to town meeting and make a request. But yeah, so the, the second piece does say that you would appoint an ad hoc committee for social services review and that they, they would follow this process. So the first one is just one that we have to do just because of. Right, this, the change in the, the state requirement, so that one we have to do. The second one is just, as Peter said, it's more of a, you know, the board looking at trying to organize this procedure so that we can start it in July.
So we need to, you want to adopt this, Paul, the appropriation policy tonight?
Yes, and then the other one, again, I think we can bring it back and there's other changes or other things the board would like. No, this one I didn't put one on because it's the first time everybody's seen it, so I didn't want to. The other one for sure, we could have, could have adopted.
More about that ad hoc committee, right here, so. Valid. It's going to be 24 years, they would be good.
Sorry.
Okay, so we're going to sign this first one tonight.
I would, if you, yeah, if you would adopt that, that would be great, and then we'll bring the other one back for another agenda.
Let's have the motion on the floor to adopt the social service agency appropriation policy.
So move.
A second.
We made a seconded to approve the social service agency appropriation policy is updated. Any further comments? You're done, Sue, you still with us?
I'm here.
Okay, we're getting to the bottom here. Sorry about Paul taking so long, but anyways. Once we made seconded to approve the social service agency appropriation policy is updated, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, would say nay, looks like it's an unanimous decision, so it's going on.
Can I just suggest something? It says that you would post, publish an announcement on the website.
Yes.
But because this is the first year we're doing this, may I suggest that you also email this group?
We'll contact the existing ones, but we have to do the other one just as open as a requirement for public notice. But yeah, for sure, we'll, we'll, everybody who's on the current list will definitely contact, I'm sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's go to the proposed committee process, five year social services course review, that was the second part of the process. Structure grant application municipal match. This is on the front street retaining wall.
So we are in the time of the year where we're, we're submitting our request to Vermont Agency of Transportation to do a structures grant. We had submitted Front Street back in 2019, it did not get funded, so we are resubmitting it. The wall hasn't gotten in better condition since 2019, that's no big surprise anymore. So this will, this will give us all of the soil analysis as well as the structural engineers proposals to keep the, if you've noticed, you can see the pressure on the wall starting to fail in various locations. It's got places where it's been washing out, places where you can see the wall itself is actually under stress. And it needs some attention, so this will be the first phase of, the second phase of this will be to come back in the following year and ask for your money to help fix it once we get a full design, so we'll be able to get a cost estimate on what it's going to cost.
So are those people okay with having their house partially?
They had asked us to come and do this, so I've met them a couple of times out on the property, her and her son.
It's right on top.
It's literally, yeah.
Oh, I've got.
When I walk, I look at that, I've looked at that so many times now, but.
Oh, no, it's pushing against the house, you can see.
I walked there with my dog, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So. The only thing that, that we need from the board is just the fact that if you are successful, you just want to make sure that you have a resolution to support this because there is a local match. In this case, it would only be like $3,300, but we just need to make sure, since there is appropriation, the board has a resolution.
So we approach the Brothers and get any questions from them, I mean, there's.
I've met with them a couple of times on the site, Andy and I have met with them.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
It probably won't affect them that much, except that, you know.
We'll need a temporary easement for construction because there's no way you can do the construction without working with them.
Right, the other thing is when you're in the, the street at the top of the hill, that's your proposing, right? There won't be any way to come down that hill, so it's going to be a dead end.
I don't know.
While they're working on it?
No, I figure that.
Oh, you did it. So that's one of the three options, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do the full DOT recommendation, right, they'll have all three.
Who will put this out, the Vtrans or, or us? This engineering study?
Well, it's just a grant, so we'll put it out. Yeah, they won't do it, we'll have to do it.
It's on the application, we got, we got abandoned on the application, those couple of work, it's the abandonment of the hill section of Front Street. They're not going to have that hill coming down.
And the hill houses are on there.
But really, if you look at it, there's, there's only one house on the top that has the driveway at the top of the dome.
Yep.
Up in there, yeah. This, there's a one up here, the tarantos, it's over here, but it doesn't have any effect on that.
Yeah, they, they come onto all carrots.
Yeah.
Is that something that was considered last time this was applied for? Is that something that you had all talked about was, you know, potentially just abandoning that section? I mean.
It's always an alternative, when they look at, right, the reconstruction. So they'll look at that.
So if you make the street dead end at the crest of the pool there, it's one way right now.
Yeah, it's one way, correct.
So you can't have a one-way dead-end street. Otherwise everyone would just get stuck there.
That's true, that's the other thing I'd look at, there's no, there's no way to get that, street can't be running along top of that hill anyway.
The engineers, they do the soil analysis, they can tell you what they can do with the hill, what they have to do. Because you can see where the stress is coming, the hill's pushing, yeah. They could do something up, up above that, I don't know. That's what the engineers can, can give us, you know, options.
Partial, they're going to need to have it scuffed.
Yes.
So partial conden, condemnation, so would they, would that building even take, take, part of the building, we take it down?
Depends on what they would have to do to, to reinforce the hillside.
Yeah.
Building's a mess anyway.
Houses, it's, it's creating some stress on the house for sure.
Is it, is there someone actually living?
Yeah, yes.
Is there more than, I know she lives on the bottom, on the, I think on.
No, I've only met her and her son, I have not met anybody else on the property, so. If there is, I'm not aware, right, just, there's only two I've talked to. Yep.
Don, I'm talking to.
Don, yeah.
Right.
Good call on the one-way there.
All right, so we'll need a motion to.
Just a motion to approve the local match for the, if we're awarded the grant.
I, I moved that we approved the local match for the V Trans open grant.
I second that.
Motion made second to approve the matching grant in the vicinity of ten to twenty percent of the cost of thirty-three thousand nine twenty, so could be at the most thirty-three hundred dollars.
Sixty-six hundred dollars, right?
Or sixty-six, depending, you probably, I mean, this in the middle.
Right, yeah.
So, uh, motion made seconded to approve the grant. And the matching grant, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. All right. Structure grant application's done, review and approve orders, bills and warrants, take a motion.
I moved that we approved that we're filled and wired.
I second.
Made second to approve orders, bills and warrants, any questions? Somebody review them, get some to everybody.
Yeah.
Take that as a yes, sir. Sound very good, but. Well, yeah, motion made second to approve orders, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay? Motion carries, coming around for signatures. Then the items for the May second, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
So we'll have this social services committee review process on again for a second look. We're gonna have financials, and we also want to talk about potentially adding additional money for sidewalks so that we can start to develop the sidewalk bid and start to think about putting that out now that we've awarded our primary gift for paving.
Okay, the Walkbike Committee has been discussing sidewalks, a lot of people have talked to us about how will the town decide which sidewalks are gonna be improved and which won't? And in terms of how many people use them, which are in the worst condition, how?
Well, we have the twenty-nineteen survey that shows which ones are in the worst conditions, so there's some, like Pine Street and a few that are really in deplorable condition.
That sidewalk is, or that, um, that survey was very comprehensive.
Right.
And very accurate, so.
Pretty accurate, yeah, yeah. So we would work off of that, the question is just how many linear feet, and then what, what has to be done in terms of, are there ADA requirements, or other things that were not done, appropriate curb cuts, so that all adds to the cost, it's not just linear feet, there's other, you know, pieces of that that have to be looked at, so.
But if a sideways, it's, I don't know, it has tons of use versus it serves one, one house, you know, that, do you give any consideration to a sidewalk on a main thoroughfare versus a sidewalk?
Kind of like with paving, right, we do it sort of by area, so.
Okay, nothing.
It just hasn't, I mean, that's up to the board, if they want to look at it that way, that's another way to do, to look at it, but it just, it creates a lot more cost, because the contractor has to hop around.
Right.
And he'll charge you more for mobilization and demobilization based on that. If you keep him in a geographic area, he moves faster, and he's more likely to give you a better price per linear foot.
The promenade along the river, we talked about getting a crosswalk over to. That is not in great shape, but that one's complicated because of the railroad track, can we fix that sidewalk without expanding it, or not?
Not to make it five foot.
I mean, just, it's exist, it's existing width, we improve it and it's current width.
And we're tilted, it's just that, you know, some of the walk and stuff is settling, I know they put some sort of barrier there to try and prevent the stuff from, but it's not working, I don't think.
No. Yeah, we're, we're, that's one of those beautiful views in town, and it's really hard to move along there. And then we're, we're trying to get a, you know, a crosswalk, so people can get over there from Green Street somehow. That's been a discussion.
Well, I know there's talk about trying to do this, to try to do a temporary, right, to take a look at that. And then I think once the temporary, I would, I would recommend that you use a transportation alternatives grant to do that, because you're gonna have to probably do retaining walls and build up some sort of additional support there to make that work correctly.
Yeah, the demonstration project is what, we hope you do this spring, but we're gonna, sure, so a little motion is, is wafting on that.
That one's, that one's probably a little more involved than just an actual replacement.
Probably gonna have to get some sort of commission from the railroad, if you're playing with that bank on, on there, I'm sure.
Anything you do in there right away. Oh yeah, anything in there right away, they're gonna be very.
If you wanna go for it, fine, if they don't, you're out of line. And I know that one time they talked about moving the sidewalk over into the highway.
Yeah.
And cutting the lanes down, so.
I hadn't thought of that, that's a good question, yeah.
That was, that was thought of before.
Yep.
Okay, I'll bring that idea, like, what, what.
I mean, I don't know. If they go along with that, if, I, the motion grant would cover something like that, and I know you guys have been dealing with that on, on the, why the, the, sack, the one-twenty-one bridge there.
Right.
And continue, we tried something there, but.
Yep.
Interesting, you know, one-twenty-one, if you guys, you and Andy and them discuss that about what we're gonna do out there, because that whole road's gonna be rebuilt, like, you can't just paint that over.
It hasn't been. No, it hasn't been brought.
Which I don't think.
At some point, it's gonna have to be a major redesign.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's gonna be, have to be regravel, there's screws recovered, it's gonna have to replace under, if you go down now, you can get that little. The thing with the head, headers on the, colors are gone, that's what's causing that little bit.
Yeah.
That's a big, that's gonna be a bad.
Probably, it's a big question. Two to three years out, depending on.
Yeah, at least another year in the village, maybe two, and then probably that third year, we'll probably have to do that.
We have to have it scoped first, or can?
Not to have it scoped, and.
So can we apply for the scoping now, some, three years?
That one's not gonna qualify, we're gonna have to do that as a separate grant.
That's a state number, that's a state numbered highway.
Town highway.
Oh, we're, sorry, it's the towns.
Everybody.
State number town.
I'd love it for it to be a state highway. If they want to take it, I was gonna say. If we can work a deal, Rick, I'm all for it.
Call them up.
We got a highway for you.
And they were the, the, the sidewalk money is out there, and they said you can use it for widening roads and stuff, but it's gonna be there in three years or four, who knows?
Right.
Well, the challenge with that is, you know, unless we do something with the bridge in Westminster, it's kind of gonna be absurd to have this bike path that terminates a bridge.
I know, I know, and there, there was the plan to go back at the drum factory there, and there's, there's a, people have actually walked through there and seen that, can we, can we put it through there, to get the walkers and bikers away from that narrow, dangerous road? But it's complicated.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items for that meeting? Or you, we talked, can you, can you suggest items for the upcoming?
Yeah, we're still on that.
Yep.
So Peter Bergstrom posted something that the solar array can't begin gravel pit. So they find someone who wanted to buy forty thousand dollars worth of electricity a year, it's held up until that happens.
Which one?
The one by the gra, the gravel pit.
The one we sold.
I don't know. He's, he's moving full steam ahead.
But he's, but one of, Erickson's wrong, or there, someone's, someone's wrong, because he says that they can't, that the, this is the Rodney and Energy Committee, part of the conservation committee, and they posted today, yesterday, he said, can we find a customer who's, who, obviously an institutional customer, who would take forty thousand dollars, they need, they need a third optic, or they, or they can be.
Alex was emailing me Monday about working with Bucky on the access for his, for his distribution.
Is there another, is there another solar?
There's another one that's being proposed.
Yeah, I went up, can't email the one, the one.
Stickney Farm is the one that's being proposed right now, that one might be, that one might be an offload.
Because he said, I, that was the only array I knew that was in process. I think that in the post, he actually had a picture, like an aerial photo, and it was the gravel pit. It was, that he said in that post, so I don't know.
That's what I know.
Yeah, he said.
I read, but since we were, we were discussing that, they, they said they, they were gonna sell on the market, and they were.
Alex hasn't mentioned anything to me that there's any holdup, like I said, we were talking Monday, because he's working with, with Buck, who now owns that other property, you know, the old Savage property about some stuff, so.
Is Alex the guy from No List?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Unless something changed between Monday and Tuesday, Rick, which, didn't get an email today from him, so.
Also, when I get home, I'll forward Peter's post to you.
Okay.
Take a look at it, see which. But I can see that one held up. I don't know who's gonna pay, who's gonna take forty thousand dollars for the work, who?
It would sound a bit more applicable to the Stickney thing, because I don't know who, how they would be signing on the school, you know, Sacner's School, maybe Mon Academy.
Right. Could be the mix-up there with, with.
Because that's the latest one, and the other one is probably in the process.
That's what, that's what I thought, that's why it's so surprising to see that.
Who knows, maybe there's something changing.
Plus, he's looking for another one, because again, he might be looking at more, because we are, you know, closing another section of the pit, but we haven't started talking about that.
No.
You know, we're not closing that till twenty-twenty-five, I believe, so.
What's the, what's the password for downstairs, Scott, for this, this router?
Um.
Rock, Kim, Lower Theater, that one.
Yeah. That one, and it's on the wall, isn't it?
Rock Meeting. Rock Meeting.
Low, all lowercase?
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, so let's move along while you're doing that, agenda, joint board meeting. I know we're coming to, Rick, this will be interesting, so if you're questioning the tax sale policy.
Yeah.
I wanted to get it on before that, but Scott thought it might be better to get all three boards, boards together and discuss it.
All right.
For the change, I know Sacner is probably not gonna go, and I forget, trying to get them to, I'm. Uh, I think they, it's perfectly happy, they're just doing things on the properties. But reading their audit report, it's kind of interesting, they couldn't figure out who paid and who didn't. It's not a, it's a great, it's a.
In Sewardville?
Yeah, well, they, that's one of the things they were saying, is they can. That, that was came from Peter Bergstrom. He's on that auditing committee. All right, well, we know that, I don't know what else we got, we got.
Well, the LMP on there as well, we have the, the Ridwick folks want to do a presentation. So, Ridwig, they have an update on vacant and underutilized parcels, they want to talk about redevelopment, and can't remember what else, so.
All right.
Are they having that open announcement something as of?
Twenty-four, the opening for the BF Garage.
I heard it might be for the town.
They're emailing us today that they're still planning on it.
Oh, they are planning on, okay.
They'll be last minute, because they got a lot of work to do.
They asked me to speak, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so it is still on.
Still on.
But that's any great stage, but.
Okay, so here's, here's the post that says, the town gravel, Nova Soul is ready to build a second, rocking in one recently bland part of town gravel pit, that would one-on-three, they need one more commercial nonprofit optic before they can break ground.
That's what Scott's showing, though.
And here's the map. There's, there's one-on-three.
Yeah, now you've got two.
And that one says existing.
Right, I think the existing is the one he's talking about, the one we're working on with him now. I think he's talking about that there's a potential to do a second.
That must be it.
At the same location.
Yeah.
Which we haven't even started.
A second one.
Right, which we haven't even started talking about.
Oh, okay, I hadn't, I hadn't heard about the second one.
No, because we haven't, we haven't even approached it, I want to get the first thing done, and we'll see where we are.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, the existing one is the one on Andy Anderson's pit.
Would, would, I'm sorry, Sue, which one now?
The existing one is the one that's on Andy's pit, they did that one, further down by the Lower Bartonsville Turn. That one has been up and operating, so that's, already has the uptake.
Well, Matt, the, the, we're looking at Rick's computer here, and there's two sections designed in the pit. One is the one that they, we've already got, they're supposed to be in process.
Right.
And then there's another one they've got up in the further corner there. They've got, they've got designated, or Bergstrom has it here.
Yeah.
I don't know where he got the information, but.
We haven't talked about that one at all.
So if they're planning to second one, we haven't heard about it yet.
All right.
So.
Well, I guess they can't even start planning it till they have some ideas, when it takes. When, when you read what he wrote, didn't he say a second, didn't he say that?
Yeah, one more commercial he said, so, yeah.
There's a second solar light plant.
Yeah, on recently land private turn. We probably need to get some more information, because until then, we're just, to speculate, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yeah. All right, uh, okay, we're done with the joint board meeting, uh, items, let's do other business, Elijah, you got anything?
Got one question for Scott, or maybe for Gary, has anyone applied for cannabis license?
We have two in the works, we're waiting on a couple of aspects that have not been completed yet from them, and then we'll have to have them come to the local cannabis control board.
That would be us, right?
Yes.
And then that's for retail?
One is a retail, one is just a grow all my.
Bye.
Yeah, I, as I mentioned when we were talking with Paul, I'm, I'm taking part of, working with Wyndham Regional Commission on this intermunicipal shared services thing, so I'll be calling you for, just to talk to you about it. And I, just make the board aware that I'm, I'm gonna be reaching out to four or five other little towns along with that. Co.
Are, are you, are you approaching townwide policing thing, I don't, is that on your dog, it's the thing?
It's, it's one of the things that.
Okay, no, I know, I was gonna ask if we want to put that on a joint board.
That's up to you guys, we certainly can.
Joint board meeting.
Right.
Because, you know, we've already stolen the blood gate with Bartonsville now.
Right.
And.
Okay, yeah, you can put it on there, you know, the joint board's out till the end of May.
May thirtieth.
I, I have probably know enough to talk a little bit about that, yeah.
I feel like the trustees mentioned something about that in their meeting too, about having that on the agenda, so.
And we start the discussion, anyway, we get them, get the direction, see what they want, whether it's, it's workable or not, I mean, you know, we've got three, three entities trying to figure out.
The Regional Commission just, just developed a policy for how they could help towns that want to work together and he- help them develop the contracts and everything that would be involved in that.
Yeah.
So what we're doing now is kind of surveying people, who's interested, and who, who, who needs help with this?
We're gonna need some help with planning and zoning, we've, we've done multiple outreaches, and we're not getting any candidates, so.
Wow.
And we're not the only one, there's three or four places all through the valley here that are looking too. So I think we're gonna have to look at regionalization to really make that work.
Right, I'll keep you updated on that.
And, oh, one, sorry, keep going, but one, the, the, the town, the participation town meeting thing, that's something that, like, with the town meeting, you said this, we want the select board to look into it, do we want to appoint some kind of a subcommittee? Because I know there's certain people who are very interested in this, citizens who aren't elected. Do we, I don't want to approach that. It's a pretty difficult assignment.
Well, it's not really that difficult, because the first thing you do is start eliminating where you're gonna be able to hold.
Right, gotta be within the town boundary, right?
It's gotta be, you can't hold it down to Westminster, there's a high school, that's, because it's in a different town, that's been with town.
That's about as holding it here, like you have it.
Well, that's what I said, the first thing, so if you've eliminated that, any other place, like the middle school, central school, center, because of parking issues and everything else, then you're right back where you started from, which is, then it's a disposable discussion, where they move the screen upstairs, or some other, find some other way to improve the drainage system, so we don't, you know, we can do it up there with any problem.
But attracting more participants, I think, was the goal, getting more people to attend.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know. Serving meals is not where you attract, because they're not gonna come there to vote on, because they're gonna come there to eat your food.
Because Westminster does good.
Westminster.
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
So, I mean, no, uh, I know the statute requires that with their, their thirty-seven street, uh, Main Street, acts, thirty-seven Main Street process, I mean, where they had.
But it didn't change anything.
No. No, didn't produce any more people, the same people just came, went to the vert two or three.
Yeah.
The only time you, way you're gonna get, uh, people, more people to attend is you have a contentious issue on board. Throw murder on there. You wanna see people go out the woodwork? Here, come out the woodwork.
Well, maybe we should put it on there, actually. I'd like to, I'd like to talk about that, yeah.
That's, that's really, if you need a contentious issue, that's, that's. Oh, yeah.
Well, let's do that.
Let's think of another contentious issue.
Well, we might have a new board trustee. It might be something to start, uh, discussing again.
Yeah.
Until we only have, they don't have that much people running, though. That's the problem.
But there are some contested races.
There are contestants, right.
Well, you got one for president and then a trustee.
Yeah.
Two trustee seats. And one of the persons that's gonna probably get bumped off, or the presidency is wanting to go on the trustee seat, so to get the presidency, probably not gonna collect the trustee seat. So then you, you know.
Then you have a new president and then, and one.
You never know, you know. You, you never know where the thing's gonna go.
Right.
So the other ques, I have one other thing, uh, I talked Scott a little bit about it. This, um, study committee for the fire and everything, that has not been off the ground for the squat. We got fifteen thousand bucks from the three entities sitting in the pocket. I actually got this from Scott, the town just coughed up the other fifty while we're waiting for the wonderful USDA to make up the mine. The money eventually does come back, then we wouldn't pay ourselves. But if we don't get that thing off the ground, we're never gonna get anywhere, no, whether we need, what we need for service.
Absolutely.
I think that's a good idea, dear.
Yeah.
I would, I would want to, yeah.
Because, yeah, we want to do it anyways, whether we get the money or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, because, I mean, that's part of the thing that was came up on the, the meeting in Sac River about the street they proposed was on that. One of them was a fire station.
Right.
Which I didn't like, because it's a lot smaller building than what he wants.
Yeah.
And, uh, and they were gonna put it at, you know, at thirty-seven, so. And so, I don't know.
All right, well, let's, shall we vote on that in the next meeting?
I would, I would.
Could we put that in the agenda?
Put it on there, because it's a town, it's a town issue, not, not to do with the registry, you know, it's not, that's, we wanna get it, and then, then we can, at the same time, as Scott said, get that thing out, get that thing going.
If you look at the equipment expenses that are coming, coming out of the future years, we have to buy every, each apartment, a new, brand-new truck for two or three million bucks.
And I think, I think if we, we, Andy, I, I mean, we can find money somewhere, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe from the solar.
Only fifty thousand bucks.
Well, are we getting fifty from the solar field, Scott, the Novus?
Yes.
Need some of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Potentially. I think you have enough other, you know, ways we can fund it. You don't have to dedicate.
Well, maybe we should add to the agenda to have a discussion about town meeting committee or not. Next, next, next one, next meeting, okay.
Sure.
Very good.
All right. Anyone else have anything? No, then there's no need for an executive session, as I can see.
I know the weak term.
I just wanna answer that question.
Wait, Scott. Wait, uh, Peter, there's, the Union Five-Ninety-Six has had their hand up for a while. I don't know if it's something. They wanna say something.
Sure. Might be.
Thanks, Susan, Jamie Barrick here. Hey, um, so in other business, um, it really seems like we've had a lot of issues last several meetings, not just select board, but trustees with Fact TV feed and everything. Are, are we gonna look at addressing what those issues are prior to, you know, starting meetings late, trying to get connected and everything to where others, I mean, we're talking about participation and inclusion here. Um, and I had a couple of people message me that they tried to get in, um, and spend, you know, ten, twelve minutes trying to get into Fact TV and gave up, so. Um, is it something that we could look offline and during the week before we have a meeting that maybe whatever those technical issues are, we could get resolved?
That's a good idea. I've suggested that in the past, Jamie. We just, uh, I don't know where the fact, uh, I think part of the problem is they can't get people to, to do the filming.
Yeah.
Well, well, they, they stay until seven o'clock, so, um, you know, the April fourth meeting when GMP, um, was there and, and spoke, um, at the meeting, when that feed was lost, there was nobody to reset. But it seems like the start of the local trustees and select board meetings lately, um, there's been issues, so I, I, if it's a communications or something, cables that need to be replaced, I mean, I believe that we do sponsor Fact TV, um, some town funding. Um, if they need something, let us know what it is to where we could get it corrected so people aren't getting frustrated and just tune out, right? But.
Definitely, uh, you know, we, we have talked about going back to the individual mics instead of these owls that adhere to improve the, um, you know, voice quality. And, and, uh, of course, we now have the issues, the second time, second, third, fourth, fifth time, we've got problems with connection. We don't know whether that's a Wi-Fi issue or, or what, but I agree with you. I think if we can't get that straightened out, then maybe we should go back to them, uh, filming the things live.
Well, it's just something to look at, folks, and, and, uh, Sue, I appreciate you, uh, recognizing my hand up, and thanks for every, everybody and, uh, everything you guys do.
Thank you. We've taken under advisement, Gary. Okay, motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
We. Thanks, Sue.
Bye, Sue.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at facteighteen@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.